Welcome everyone for today's special meeting, Friday, May thirty first, two thousand and twenty four, five P- five P M. Roll call please.
Mayor Beltran.
Present.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Jenny Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Solario.
Please raise for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
No, but um I just need to change a date on number three.
The date would be.
July thirteenth instead of June ninth.
Still the same time from nine to three?
Yes.
Any other item?
No. No.
Hearing none, so do I have a motion to approve consent calendar items?
Motion.
Motion by Sabrina, do I have a second?
Second.
Jenny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, oh, I'm not taking it. Um, I wanted to table that one, number six.
Um, they're gonna, it's just, we're not hiring anybody?
I know.
But what is your reason for it?
Well, because we don't have anything on it and I would like to see the three, um whoever we're hiring, a little bit more information on it.
Not, it's, we're not hiring, okay.
I know, I know.
She does, let me just explain. We're not hiring anybody?
I'm not saying.
We're not approving any, uh, in any, any agency yet? It's informational on how to perceive and move forward with recruiting or hiring a company to recruit a city manager. So you don't want us to recruit? Is that what you're trying to say?
Uh, excuse me Neil, can I table it?
You can table it, I just like.
Do I need to explain it? Okay, I moved to table it.
Okay, so that what's happening here is that we're not going to move forward with, uh, getting anybody to, uh, replace the last city manager. Cause that's what I see here. Again, here we go with not following and not trying to do what's right for this community and for the city. Instead of just making it personal about what you want, it should be about what the city needs, not what you want. And again, I don't, I'm explaining it to the community. You don't have to explain anything.
Go through all this?
Yes.
When we table something, when we table something, it says you're not supposed to discuss it anymore.
Yes, yes, because I will be transparent and I will let the community know. I am not gonna hide.
Second, it stopped.
And I will open it up. I haven't even opened it up for, they made up a motion and I haven't even opened it for that. I run the meeting then you, and, and that's the thing. Is, what I want the people to know is that again, we're not even moving forward with having a, to look for an agency that will help us find a qualified city manager. Now, how are we gonna make sure that our city continues to move forward in a positive direction when council is, is reluctant to even do that because of personal feelings? You didn't want to explain, you don't have to turn the mic on, you don't have to explain. I'm explaining for what I see.
But that's your explanation.
That is my explanation of what I see, yes, exactly, of what I see here.
Okay, so my explanation is, I feel that chief is doing a good job. I don't see anything right now.
I'm not disagreeing. We need chief to do, be the chief.
Why are you?
Why can't we have him be the, you cannot have a, a person run the city and also be a, a, a chief of police, you cannot. There is no other city that does that, but here only in Parlier, of course, we're always gonna be doing that, right?
This has been, this has been happening anyway, period.
Because it's not about. It's, it's always gonna be the case because you wanna control and that's what you do. You come every day again and sit with chief to give directives like you used to do with Sonia and that's what you wanna continue to do. That is why we had the issue with the, that is why we had the issue with me counseling a meeting that you were giving directives to a chief of police as acting as a city manager and, and items that were never approved by council. But you're sitting there again, doing the same thing that you were already instructed from an independent, an independent attorney that told you guys that that is not allowable, that is a violation of the Brown Act, and you still wanna continue to do that. That is my problem.
Well, my problem is we have.
And, and I don't sit here every day coming to see chief of, uh, chief every day to instruct him in anything, but you do and so it has.
Mocking me?
Oh, I know what you're, you're doing.
Are you stalking me?
I don't need to stalk you, uh, Jenny.
Well, then how do you know, how do, I don't know when you come in.
Cause of, cause.
I do not know when you come in.
Cause of the items that are being, the items that are trying to be going on the agenda.
At city council, excuse me.
Because of the items that are trying to go on the agenda. That is how I know that is being instructed by you. It's the very same items you were, guys were trying to get Sonia to do.
Now, can you explain Alma, why did you not pay the city bills and we are late with them now?
Because you guys were violating the Brown Act.
No, you, you did something huge and you hurt the community for not paying the bills. Now we're paying them late because of you. That's not the way you were supposed to run your household or a business. If you're gonna handle taxpayers' money, you gotta pay the bills.
You know what?
Now, you explain to the city, why didn't you pay the bills? What Brown Act did you break?
None. You guys sure did though.
She didn't break the Brown Act, people in live stream, it's your tax dollars and she didn't pay the bills.
On closed session where it was not authorized, there was, it was not agendized. You guys took a vote on something that was not agendized. That is a huge violation of the Brown Act and that exactly what you guys did. And then you instruct the chief to go ahead and put it on the agenda for the next meeting. I kept saying it's not gonna go on the agenda cause it was not a legal vote and you guys still pushed it and that's when I canceled the meeting. Because it was still gonna go on, even though I had said and Neil had instructed that it was a violation because it was not agendized and it was a legal and it was an illegal vote and you guys still wanted to do it.
Well, tell you the truth, bottom line, she covers it, she did not pay the bills, people, that's your money she's playing with, your money.
Again, that's what, that's what happens here. Violations after violations of the Brown Act.
And she talks over you so you won't know what's going on. She was supposed to pay the city's bills no matter what. That's what we're up here for. You don't punish the community nor make the council look bad because it didn't go your way.
That's why we're up here because. That is why we're up here now because now you know that it is a violation and you guys were instructed about what the violation was and you still wanted to do it regardless.
Didn't investigate us, no violation.
Don't say they haven't because you don't know yet, okay? Don't count your, don't count your blessings until you know what's really gonna happen.
Over a year, you've been telling that us, Alma, I'm waiting for them.
Oh, you know, you know investigations don't, hey, you know investigations don't happen overnight. It's always a year's process and you know what?
And.
Don't, don't think that you're not being watched.
It's okay, it's okay. I don't have nothing to hide.
These violations are always gonna be reported because I will never be.
I'm waiting for them to call me. I've told them, I'm ready for them to call me.
Don't hold your breath because you just never know.
Well, you just said that they're gonna call me, it's fine.
Cause I take, it takes a year or two years.
Or we have been doing it over a year, you guys keep threatening us.
Exactly. You've been doing it, you just admitted it, you've been doing it over a year.
You guys been threatening us over a year because it's not going your way, but people in live stream, she's messing with your money and hurting our city, not paying the bills.
You're the guys that made the decision even with Greenbrier, giving away everything to Greenbrier.
What kind of mayor does that? That is horrible.
So now that we have a motion and we have a second to table.
Member waiting to be recognized.
Um, I just, I would just.
Because it is about Greenbrier.
We're, we are, hey, you guys, we're on number six. We're on number six.
You gamble all the time.
Molina, um, motion, Kathy second, but I'd just like to, um, I just want, it, I wanted it to be presented first. Bertha didn't even say a word and she's supposed to present.
I know, cause they, cause they don't wanna hear it.
So, can I hear what?
Yeah.
But we, we haven't voted.
You, you haven't voted and if, you, you have basically.
Can you please, Neil's explaining.
Basically a competing.
And we, I haven't opened it to you.
A motion.
You're, I haven't opened it to you yet.
Hear the presentation, is that correct?
Yes.
So you've got two competing motions, you got a second of her motion?
Of, of, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear because I was rudely interrupted by Umberto.
She's making a motion to hear the presentation.
Yes, I, I second that motion, absolutely.
So you've got, you've got two competing motions and, you know, we can, we can either take a vote on it. It's, it's an informational item, isn't it?
Is it? That's all it is, but they don't wanna hear it because they wanna continue to, to control chief, that's why. So it's fine. Go ahead, let's take a roll call vote.
That's not true, but it's all right.
Yes, it is true and your, and the proof is just right now.
Take a, take a vote on the first motion, which is to table it.
But chief, I mean, uh.
No, it's not just the presentation because.
And direction.
It's an action. It says action on there.
Well, all I, all I see is council is to direct staff on how to proceed.
That's directed.
With the city manager recruitment. My understanding is that Bertha has information relative to various, what I refer to as headhunter firms.
Mm-hmm.
That, that go out and search for suitable people to fill the city manager position. And I suspect her presentation is simply what those firms are and how much they charge, am I right?
Right, that's it.
But it says to take an action on it.
Action is to give directive of what we're gonna do with the, her to go look for, yeah, it's, it's, you're not hiring somebody there yet cause you don't have the information before you. How are you gonna, how are you gonna? So, you know what, Kathy, you don't run the meeting?
I'm saying, you, you, we can take a vote.
That's why I'm trying to get a roll call vote on the first motion, on the second motion, let's do the second. Okay, do the first motion.
Yes.
Sabrina?
No.
Oh.
No.
Alma?
No.
Yes.
Council?
Yes.
Matters tabled.
And we'll bring it back for, uh, June twentieth.
June sixth.
No, well.
June sixth is on.
Why, 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 okay, wait a minute, now, now.
But that's the next meeting, I'm just telling you.
Your, your, your next, your next meeting is June sixth.
It was approved. It's on your consent calendar.
I get it, we haven't approved it yet, but this is.
We did, did.
Okay, today. It wasn't previously approved, is what I'm, can I finish what I'm trying to say?
Exactly. So we can still add it. Do it for the twentieth, it's fine.
So what I'm trying to say is why, why are we tabling it for the next meeting that's next week on the sixth if, if it's gonna be the same information? I don't get that.
Do it June the twentieth, that's fine with me.
You know, because, that's fine. It's still gonna not take away from the fact that we still need to hire a city manager that's experienced because we were having too many issues.
I'm sorry.
Not as a city manager, where has he been a city manager? Where has he been a city manager?
I also agree until June, June twentieth.
With city manager before.
And you wanna go back to that? I, I understand you wanna go back to the unexperienced then. No, Kathy, you don't run the meeting, okay? You, you can't run anything, period. So anyways, uh, we can go ahead and put it for the sixth since that's what Diego wants. So we'll put it for the sixth instead.
But it was my motion.
I don't care.
I said for the June.
The sixth, the sixth, since Diego, the sixth is fine. Now she doesn't wanna do the sixth. First she was fine with the sixth, now she doesn't wanna do the sixth.
Well, I mean, you, you, you tabled it and you didn't table it to a specific date.
I'm just saying.
So I, I would assume the matter would reappear at the next regular meeting.
And that's the sixth.
Which is the sixth.
I was just saying, why are we tabling it since the next meeting is next week? That, that's because you, it, no, it's the next week. So, okay, let's just do the sixth, fine. Thank you, thank you. So now we can move on, uh, to the next item, which is item number seven. Um, consideration and necessary action of the adoption of the resolution number two thousand and twenty four dash twenty one, authorizing an acquisition of apportionation to the property located on thirteen nine forty Manning Ave. And that's Javier. Go ahead, Javier.
Thank you, um, good evening. So, um, we've, for a long time, Madison Avenue has shrunk in as it dumps into Manning Avenue. Um, and that's due to the, the, the three older houses that are on that property, um, being there before the road was widening, widened. Um, so, uh, just a few months ago, we got an opportunity, we got a call from the property owner saying, hey, they wanna actually get rid of that, the piece of property that, and give us back the road because they like what's happening around town and they wanted to extend through and, and be pretty. And they, they, I told them that Madison, we're reducing it, we're adding trails on each side, so that's a project that's coming down the line. And he was excited about it, so he wants to sell us that property at appraised value, appraised value. Um, so fair price and I'm estimating, uh, with, with today's authorization, um, I'll go and get an appraisal, go through the whole process of acquiring, uh, just that piece of property to build out Madison Avenue into Manning. Um, I think it's a great opportunity for the city because we've tried in, in historically to, to acquire that property um, and unsuccessfully because they wanted to keep it in the family, so it's, it's, it's window of opportunity that may not be here as, as the properties get passed down uh, from different, uh, trust owners. Um, it, I, 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 I put some costs here approximately. Um, the owner, since there are houses on the, uh, property we're gonna acquire, um, he is requesting that we tear down those houses so that they're not a blight to the community.
Is that the two, the front house and the little, um, shed in the back?
Yeah, it's like a house and.
That one on the, the right, the what, closer to the inside, that one's gonna stay?
Stays, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
The patio, patio property?
Tone it down a bit.
Ms. Harry?
So there, um, who's that? So that's just those, it's just like they're gonna cut, sell the, that piece of it.
Yeah, we're just taking that little piece we need for the road, everything else they're gonna keep in the family. Yeah, subdivided. So the cost here, I kinda included the, the paperwork for their surveyor to prepare the documents to split that property and to tear down the, the buildings as well, so.
Okay, so is there any other questions? Okay, any from the public? Okay, so.
A motion.
A second.
Okay, uh, I have a motion on the floor, Diego, and I have a second from Sabrina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. And next we have, um, item number eight, necessary action approval and resolution number two thousand and twenty four dash twenty two, authorizing acquisition of the right of way, uh, for future Parlier and Newmark Roundabout presented by, uh, city engineer Javier.
Yes, let me get, uh, so yeah, this is for our roundabout project. Um, we're finalizing the design. Um, part of the process is acquiring the property that we're gonna need to expand that intersection to fit the new roundabout. Um, and luckily we designed it in a way where we're not really tearing up too much on Heritage Park, um, and, uh, and it's, and not too much of downtown, but we did need a little bit of the southwest property, uh, with the, and right there, it's just empty land. The, the owner of the property was very willing and, and, uh, very excited for the roundabout project. Um, again, he likes what's going on around town. So he was super supportive and, and just selling us again at appraised value. We got an appraisal, um, from a professional appraisal company and, uh, that's the, essentially the right of way acquisition cost. It's the fair value of the market.
Any questions?
It's marked off already where, where it's gonna, could be cut off?
Yeah, yeah, it is. You could drive up there and see. It's, it's probably ten feet, it's, there's like orange sticks on the ground, yeah.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty big chunk though.
Well, no, I, I knew that was coming and I, yeah, it, it'll be, it'll look nice.
Yeah.
Plus you probably move it a little bit back.
Yeah, right, no, it's fine, it's fine.
Hey, just go around the fireworks area.
They're gonna drop it already, so, no, I'm kidding.
We'll put you at the center.
That's a good location right here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, um, there is any pu- uh, public comment on this item? Okay, so then, uh, um.
A motion.
Motion by Sabrina and second by Diego, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries, five yes. And so next we move on to. Item number nine, consideration and necessary action. Resolution number two thousand and twenty four dash twenty three, authorizing the contract award for the Fresno Roofing Company, Inc. For the Parlier Police Department Roofing Project, authorizing the mayor or acting city manager to execute the agreement on the behalf of the city. Uh, Javier?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, so yeah, as you know, we're trying to push forward with the, the building remodel for the PD so that we try to use most of those funds before the end of the year. Um, and part of it was doing the roofing project immediately because we need to protect the building's, uh, structure. And since we have the funds moving that right now while the architect is designing the, the building itself. Um, and we went out to bid for three bids, uh, we went out to bid publicly and we received three bids, um. Pr- pristine.
Umberto. Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so pristine roofing was the lowest bidder, but they failed to submit the appropriate documents for disabled veterans. So they were disqualified, which would mean the next lowest qualified bidder was Fresno Roofing Company.
My question is, um, is it, I mean, cause I know they're gonna work on the structure, right? Would it be wise to work on the roof and how about if, is, like, I don't know, would it interfere with the structure? Because I don't know how the structure may be, they looked at all that, the, the actually contractor that's actually gonna design the, the building itself? Are they involved as well or is it the same company or it's not?
Yeah, so the architect designing the building is the one that went out to bid for the roofing, I'm just presenting it.
No, no, but I mean, like, is it the same company that's gonna actually work on the, uh, PD, uh, structure?
Uh, no, um.
Are they a? Are they aware, I mean, cause, I, to me, I didn't.
Well, like, he said it's the, the company that's doing the structure, they're the ones who went out to bid for the, the roofing.
They're the architect.
Already assessed everything, okay, I just wanna make sure that they are aware of everything that's being done before, you know? Cause I don't want that layer on to, for it to collapse or something.
When I understand, the, the architect had worked closely with, uh, the roofing company or whatever company, the concrete company.
Okay.
To understand the design and the structure, so yeah.
Yeah, that's good, I just was, I'm wondering, because, you know, the other person needs to, the other company needs to know exactly what's going on with that structure, you know?
Yeah, yeah, phasing it out.
Especially, cause isn't it, how old is that building? It's very old, right? Because it's the same kinda, uh, thing that happened with the one downtown, right? Like, the corner, uh, building downtown, it was, it's so old that they had to.
That one was done when I was like ten, chief, and I'm thirty-three.
Like back in maybe late sixties?
No, I went to Hepster.
Think so.
So, yeah, that's, that's my only concern, so.
In the early sixties. It's got a few.
Probably sixty-five, around sixty-five or something.
I forbid something possible.
Yeah.
I don't know, cause that scares me, you know, I mean.
Yeah, the architect is, that's designing it, he has a team of a structural engineer and an electrical engineer and, and an H P.
Everything, that's awesome, okay, great, I, that was just my concern. Any other questions?
Sorry, sorry. I had asked chief about the gate. What's the delay on that and where were you gonna start on another project? It's a good idea to roof first, because if it rains, you'll ruin the floor and what have you, all the time, common sense tells you roof first then floor. So, how, how long it's gonna be before we get the gate for the PD?
The gate guy has been, um, a real problem for us, we're actually moving to, um, uh, discontinue his contract because he hasn't been able to meet our deadlines, um, and he's just been leading us on, um, and so we're actually, uh, we're actually looking into ways to kinda get a point system to, to start, if these contractors are, you know, delaying us, or they start getting points and they are less qualified for, for future projects, but this is the one person, that contractor, that's just not coming through.
That's fine.
So, so if he would not meet the deadline, right? So you're moving on forward with someone else, so is that breaching the contract for him?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we have to have a, a very detailed reasons, which we probably have to meet with Neil to make sure everything's, you know, cause he spent money on, on this, but he's just not meeting the requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Javier, and, uh, the, the question wasn't because I wanted the floor done first before the roof, that's just ridiculous. Uh, the only reason is because the, the thing that, that I look at is because you mentioned downtown with the structure and how old it was, and anything that's that old and it could collapse, so that, that, I just wanna make sure that the, the ones that are working on the facade are always gonna be involved. And you already clarified that, so that's good. That wa- that's the reason why, not cause of floor or anything like that, that's ridiculous. So let's move on to the next, uh, so now that we need to vote on that, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Diego, do I have a second? Second by Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five ayes, so you're good to go on that one, and now we can move on to public com- comments for closed session item. Neil?
You, you have one item pending litigation, which is Garza versus City Parlier.
And that's only that item, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, it's on the record, it's only that case, and any co- any comments from our public for closed session? Hearing none, then we'll go into closed session and we'll come back, thank you.